Okay, Commission Meeting for October 9th will come to order. City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Kayler?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Mayor Paxton?
We have Megan here tonight. No, okay. Commissioner Watkins, would you do the invocation?
Yes.
And Commissioner Abraham, the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will, ma'am.
Shall we pray? Father God, as we come to you in prayer, Lord, we thank you for this day, thank you for life, thank you for eternal life and through your Son, Jesus Christ, and we know that we'll be with you one day to spend eternity there and helps us to be about your business while we're here, just give us wisdom to make the proper decisions concerning the city and the direction we go, and just pray you'd be with our populace, protect, watch over on the highways, help everyone to be safe, pray that no one was injured seriously in the accident, and we just give you the praise, honor, and glory for all your many wonderful blessings, and we give thanks in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions?
Madam Mayor, pro tem, we have one addition and we have one deletion. The addition is regarding appointments, and the addition is item 5B.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to the minutes. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the reading of the minutes for the October 2nd, 2012 City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Okay, we go to appointments now. Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Paxton and jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Jason Rogers as a member of the McCracken County Animal Shelter Advisory Board. This term will expire June 30th, 2016. Commissioner Gault?
I believe we may have a problem here.
Say, Jason Rogers, I've got that one.
Okay.
Is that what you said?
I have Rod Warwick.
Okay, so these are, okay.
There's two different ones. The first one should be Rod Warwick. Okay, well, if they're, you can just go ahead, Commissioner Watkins, and read yours if you have Jason Rogers.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Paxton jointly with the McCracken County Judge Executive in appointing Jason Rogers as a member of the McCracken County Animal Shelter Advisory Board.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Whereas upon the recommendation of Mayor Paxton, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint Rod Warwick Sr. to replace Bill Baxter, who has resigned as a member of the McCracken County Animal Shelter Advisory Board. This term will expire August 14th, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the recommendation of Mayor Paxton in appointing Rod Warwick Sr. as a member of the McCracken County Animal Shelter Board.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. We'll go on to motions now. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Certificates of insurance, Lewis Bean Plumbing. Certificates of insurance and right-of-way bond, Buford Heating &amp; Air, DC Electric, Benton Incorporated, Paris Masonry and Post Frame Construction, Pinnacle Incorporated. Contract for services for fiscal year 2013 executed by the mayor. Paducah Area Chamber of Commerce fiscal year 2013. Statement of assurances purchased area development fund grant award for Paducah Dog Park Project, $5,237. Deed of conveyance between Friends of Main Street Incorporated and the city for the following properties. 427 North Sixth Street, 421 North Fifth Street, 625 North Sixth Street, 717 Harrison Street, 517 North Seventh Street, 511 through 515 North Fifth Street, 5033 Madison Street. Notice of called City Commission Meeting for October 5th, 2012. Notice of cancellation of City Commission Meetings for May 1st, September 25th, and October 5th, 2012. Purchase, excuse me, Paducah Water Works Financial Highlight for Month Ending August 31st, 2012. Paducah Water Works Financial Statement Year Ending June 30th, 2012, and 2011. Bids. Engineering Public Works Department Bulk Ice Control Rock Ice, North American Salt Company, A Compass Mineral Company, Cordial Incorporated Deicing Technology, Morton Salt Incorporated.
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault?
The City Clerk's office received an open records request for the Commission Meeting Minutes for September 25th, 2007. It was discovered an error was made in the minutes as to the recording of the vote for Commissioner Watkins for the motion amending section 106-182 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Paducah, Kentucky. After review of the roll call slip maintained in the meeting file and the viewing of the recording of the Commission Meeting held on September 25th, 2007, it is determined it is necessary to make the following correction. I move that the minutes from the City Commission Meeting held on September 25th, 2007, and adopted on October 9th, 2007, be corrected to reflect a vote of no for Commissioner Watkins for the motion entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 106-182 License Fee Imposed of Chapter 106 Taxation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky."
Second.
I say a word about that. It has come to my attention here recently that when the original vote was taken to make the 2 percent, the half a percent increase from 1.5 to 2 percent, and the city payroll tax permanent, I voted no. It was a four to one vote. I remember it very clearly, and the roll call reflected that. It's on the video to verify that. But someone in the City Clerk's office, no one here, inadvertently typed it in when they were typing the minutes, that I had voted yes. It was five to zero. That was not true. And I found that out this week, and the gentleman who had, was, he was very gentlemanly about it and said, "Look, give me the proof, and I'll, I'll straighten that out." But, and so hopefully that has happened. But anyway, we did get him the proof, the video, and this needs to be corrected because it was recorded incorrectly in the minutes. So that's what this is about. So you may want to address it some too, Tammy.
Well, we had a, like the motion said, we had an open records request, and at that time, we did not know there was an error until we went back and started looking. And then when you called me, I looked at the roll call slip in the minutes and found that there was a mistake, and all I can say is, sorry.
It was costly, but at least it will move on and change that for the record, and hopefully my opponent will pull his commercial as he promised me he would with the proof. And so he was a perfect gentleman about it, and I don't blame him for running what he read, ran, because that's what it said. But it was a mistake out of the City Clerk's office, and that has been corrected, and he does have the video showing that I voted no. And so I wanted to make sure that was, was changed.
And we're certainly not blaming Tammy for this, I mean.
No, no, Tammy, wasn't, there was a lot of things going on in the Clerk's office at the time, and I think, actually, I think you were out that week because your son had had surgery, back surgery.
But ultimately, it is my responsibility, so we'll just say I take one.
All right, any other, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Okay, on to municipal orders. Commissioner Watkins?
Okay, upon the recommendation, the City Manager, Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second. Any discussion, or have any questions for John? All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting the revised and updated 2012 Jackson Purchase Natural Hazard Mitigation Plans as the official hazard mitigation plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky be adopted.
Second. Steve, want to tell us about it?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Kayler and Commissioners. What you have before you there is just the adoption of the plan itself. It went through a revision that is done periodically. The pad had personnel that spent a lot of time in putting the overall plan together and updated. You can tell by looking at it, it had a great deal of work put into it. The more important piece of it, though, besides the fact that we have a plan, is that we have to adopt the plan in order to participate in funding with FEMA. So your action tonight by approving and adopting the plan allows us to both apply for and receive funds from the federal government under any of the FEMA federal grants that are out there.
Okay.
Any questions? All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. We're going on to the ordinances for adoption, and Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky amending sections 126-76H and 1, and section 126-173 of chapter 126, zoning of the Paducah Code of Ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah amends chapter 126 to allow each tenant in multi-tenant buildings in the B2T Downtown Business Townelet Zone and the POP Planned Office Park to have their own signage. Further, section 126-73 is amended to bring this section into compliance with KRS 10243.
Second.
Any discussion? We talked about it last week, and I think that's a very business-friendly move. So, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an encroachment agreement between the City of Paducah and Paducah Transit Authority for encroachment and utilization upon a portion of City of Paducah property. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby approves the encroachment agreement with Paducah Transit Authority for encroaching upon and utilizing right-of-way located adjacent to 850 Harrison Street to install a bus-loading steel canopy structure. Said encroachment area shall be approximately 14 feet wide by 108 foot long.
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid for North American Salt Company, a compass mineral company, for sale to the city of its requirement of bulk ice-controlled rock salt, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of North American Salt Company, a compass mineral company, for sale to the city for its requirement of bulk ice-controlled rock salt for use on city thoroughfares for the remainder of the city's 2012-2013 fiscal year, ending June 30th, 2013, at the price listed below, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. The contract contains an option to execute two, one-year renewals. The North American Salt Company unit price to be delivered is $43.86. If we pick it up, the unit price is $40.86.
Second. Okay, looks like winter's on its way.
It is.
Have you seen this? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
Aye. Ordinances introduction, and we don't vote on these tonight, so Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the sale and transfer of municipally-owned real property held for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Water Works of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah approves the acceptance of a sealed bid and the sale of surplus real property located at the corner of Old Calvert City Road and Kentucky Dam Road, US Highway 62, which property was originally acquired by the Redland Water District and by virtue of acquisition is now owned by the city for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Water Works of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the use and benefit of Paducah Water to execute and deliver a quick claim of conveyance of the surplus property to Schrader Publishing Company, Inc.
Second.
We've talked about this before, but we can refresh our memory on it.
I'm really here just to answer any questions you might have. We only received one bidder, and there were only two people that could legally purchase the property, that being the Highway Department or the Schrader, so Mr. Schrader turned in the bid, the Highway Department did not, but.
Because it's a pretty small piece of property.
It's .42 acres, and it's comprised of area both in the floodplain and a small ditch, and that's no value to anyone other than the Highway Department or him, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute all documents necessary between the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management and the City of Paducah for a matching grant for the purchase of one diesel-powered generator with automatic transfer switch to be installed at fire station number one. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary with the Kentucky Division of Emergency Management for a 2011 hazardous mitigation program award in the amount of $75,120 in federal funds, and $12,019 in state monies for the purchase of one diesel-powered generator with automatic transfer switch to be installed at fire station number one. The city's cash match will be in the amount of $13,020.
Second. Steve?
You all are previously authorized to cash match for this, I believe, if memory serves correctly. One of the reasons you had to approve the plan was so that we could accept this grant award. This will have three of the five fire stations upgraded in emergency power to full-power systems. That means the entire station will run, which is a huge upgrade from where we were 20 years ago, when we've got a couple of lights and an outlet or two with the smaller generators that we had. So this will have us in much better shape. We've got a plan to take care of the two remaining stations, and hopefully you'll see something on them within the next year or so.
Okay. Thank you. City Managers' report?
I have no report, madam.
All right. Commissioners comment?
I got one, and Chief, I hate to put you on the spot and catch you off-guard, but this will be an easy question, but if you wouldn't mind coming up, please, sir, I would, you'd be the one with the answer to this, for this. The accident on Park Avenue reminded me, I wanted to ask this question. The last couple of, the last probably two weeks or so, I guess, I've come up on two accident scenes in, in the city where there had been an automobile accident that day, I don't know how long before I arrived, but there was a lot of glass and debris from the automobiles still left in the middle of the highway. The last one was the other day in front of Henning Plaza there at Walgreens where that light is. And is that the wrecker company's responsibility? I wonder whose that is, because it's really, I mean, you've got all kinds of glass, and in this case, there was part of a bumper and some other stuff, and it was all in the middle of the highway along Oak Road. And so whoever's cleaning up, or, you know, they're leaving stuff that shouldn't be there. The glass is, you know, could cause a flat tire, and you have to drive through that mess. And so I didn't know if the wrecker service is responsible for that. Surely, the police department's not, I don't know, but it, somebody's not, you know, not doing their job.
I noticed that, too, to comment on Commissioner Watkins, and it looked like half the bumper, I mean, like a third of the bumper was still there.
Yeah, just right in the middle of Long Oak Road.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to Commissioners and the acting City Manager. The issue here is that it's the tow company's responsibility. For the first time, I had all the tow companies meet, we redid their contracts, and we gave them a list of things, the duties and responsibilities. They're representing the city, and we expect them to comply with those rules and regulations. That is part of their contract, they all know it, and if there's someone that is repeatedly not abiding by that contract, we will take them off the list.
Yeah. See, one of them, I called dispatch both times to have them, get somebody to clean it up, but I think this last one, I believe it was Saturday, seems like it was Saturday, I got over there at about, I don't know, 2:00 in the afternoon on Saturday, and so I don't know what time the wreck, accident happened, so I called, and she said, "Well, we've already been called on that," so I don't know how much sooner, but it wasn't cleaned up when I tried to dodge it and drive through it. And so, somebody, so somebody's not doing their job.
Okay, we'll follow up on that, and we'll find out what tow company was responsible for that, and we, and if they don't comply, you know, with the regulations and those, in those contracts, we can't take them off the list, so we will follow up on that.
Yeah, that's twice in about two weeks, and, I mean, it creates a situation where you might have caused another accident, not to mention a flat tire or something for somebody to have to mess with, but anyway.
That's a pet peeve of mine also. You're on that list, they make pretty good money towing vehicles for us, they're representing us, we expect them to take care of that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you very much. I knew it'd be an easy question, I just, I didn't know who was responsible, I thought it was probably the wrecker company.
No, it's theirs, and we will follow up on that.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it, Chief.
Today was the ribbon-cutting for the Scholar's House, and it was a nice event, and of course, we had a part in that, we were one of the partners in that venture, and it's good to see that it's going to be a great place for young women, and I guess it's women-only, to, is it only women and men? Okay, single parents?
Right, single parents.
That, that can live there and have affordable housing and daycare for their children, and get an education, and give them an arm up into making their lives better and the lives of their families better. Do you need to go?
Yeah, I need to.
All right.
Thanks.
All right, we have any public comments? We have Gary Vanderbow here tonight.
Thank you, Gail. I'm gonna pass out, I'd hate to lose Gerald, I'm gonna pass out, sort of an update from some of the nuclear worker stuff, and I want to start, I'll wait till we get back to the podium. Hey, Gary. I'm here tonight really as, to introduce a new board that's coming together, and, well, I see John left also, that's kind of interesting, but this board is Neighbors for Ohio Valley Alternative. And as you're aware, the Paducah Nuclear Workers and Piketon are sister plants, or at the Portsmouth facility, and we have joined together to develop a nonprofit, a commitment for a nonprofit organization that will perform some community activities here regarding the Paducah Gases Defusion Plant. We're made up of several whistleblowers, several attorneys, and we're looking at the issues that affect the Paducah community. And we basically brought in people that you will recognize when the board is announced. And the nonprofit division in Kentucky, I'm the chairman of that division, and we were very excited, and I'm sure Gerald will see this meeting, but we were very excited to be sponsored by an attorney in Kentucky by the name of Thomas Fitzgerald. And if anybody is familiar with Mr. Fitzgerald, is anybody familiar with Tom Fitzgerald from the Kentucky Resources Council? Tom is the watchdog attorney for all the issues across the state, and he's got a tremendous website. I meant to print that mission statement for him, but I'm honored that he decided that he would support me and my effort with our Paducah Board, which is not really a separate board, it'll be a joint board of both communities, and we have some great people that are coming together. There's a lot of the people are associated with Frankfurt in the past, don't really know all of them at Piketon, but I got introduced to them. But, but this is a, it's going to, we're gonna start, we've got funding applications in for the Paducah community, and basically what it's going to be is, there's not gonna be any more dog-and-pony shows at the Citizens Advisory Board meetings. This will be the real workers coming forward to tell you all at every occasion in all the communities. We're going to go into the communities, have town hall meetings, and the workers will not be faced with retaliation or termination for anything that's going on at the plant. You all have seen some emails that are pretty shocking here recently. And since I'm a two-time, and I didn't get a chance, by the way, Gail, I appreciate you even letting me speak tonight, I'm a two-time successful False Claims Act whistleblower that just made the Paducah Sun, but they didn't choose to put my name in the Paducah Sun with Mr. George Johnson. But we are, that's really what our company's about, in assisting nuclear workers. We also help the Department of Justice in their investigation whenever we have an opportunity to expose fraud, corruption, and that's what we do. And so when the chief of police and I, you know, this man is a great attribute to this community, and I want him to be aware that when I meet with people at the Department of Justice, I don't ever meet with anybody unless there absolutely is some reason to be meeting with these people. But when workers are being threatened at that plant, health-wise, safety, everything else, you all will hear it through my website and through NOVA, most likely, but I want you to want to point out that NOVA is dedicated to the community's, community's input under CIRCLA. There will not be anybody at DOE to step up and say, "I'm sorry, but we can't let you speak, I'm sorry, but you can only speak one minute." They won't let anybody step up and tell you where the waste is buried outside the plant, but I am. And Ed Whitfield knows it, because he called me. But he called me two days before it hit the Paducah Sun where the waste was buried. So what we, and that was in 2006, about this election time, about around the same timeframe, and so I just wanted, I wanted to pass out that document, and enough about NOVA, what we'd like to do, I'd love to come to my, this is where I lived, inside the City of Paducah for 30-some, well, I guess, go all the way back to when we were all raised over on 29th Street. But I would like to, Gail, ask you and the board, because you all gave a great support presentation of the nuclear workers last time, it was a great video. Now, we took the same video, and there were things that were cut out of that video, and we'll show you that later. But we don't understand why if Mitch McConnell, Ed Whitfield tell you all not to use me, or tell the mayor, as we heard last time, why the claimants don't have a say in what's going on with their, their workers, their claims and such. When I take a claimant, I was asked by Bill Campbell the other day, how many claimants on my list do I feel have been turned down appropriately? My answer to him was none. I have 240. I've submitted some stuff to Carol. And so when I see the claimants, and I'm environmental compliance, when I see these details, it shocks me. I didn't know we had people in this, this government, in this community, that would do things as they've done to these individuals, and let them die rather than compensating them. Now, there's been some big changes in the Department of Labor. We recently won a claim, and we just decided not to give you the detail, because he's actually from Marshall County, and Judge Miller has taken the resolution, and he will be passing that resolution probably at his next meeting. Because I really look at this as, I'm being asked by all the fiscal courts to come and talk to them, they want in on this. That's one of the comments. Gail, we know each other, we are, we live in this community, and we, the nuclear workers, know that if you put 5,000 jobs at Rocky Flats to clean up the plutonium there, Paducah's the source of the plutonium at Fernald. We want the cleanup here, and the board members on the cab, the cab members that agree with me, Jonathan Hines, might as well say it, Jonathan doesn't need to hide from anything, he's on the board. Now, Mr. Anderson has left the meeting, but they're, they're pack row. We have no dog-in-pack rows hunt as NOVA. We have no dog in pack rows hunt as NOVA. But what we do have is the citizens deserve the opportunity to speak and as Richard Abraham said, he shouldn't have had to take that lady's claim and all go all the way to Washington or wherever you went, because I'm sure if she got paid, she deserved to get paid, but we just revert, reverse the claim, Gail, that had been denied for five years and not one thing was changed on it when I got done with them. Now, the good news is, we think we've had a breakthrough at Honeywell. All those Honeywell people were called atomic worker employees, but the only reason the plant would operate after 1959 was because of the Honeywell plant. And so if you're working to help DOE build the atomic bombs and fill the nuclear, fill the nuclear power requirements for our power stations, let's just kind of realize, these are not superhuman people. They may live at Metropolis, but they're still the same people that breed the same chemicals at Paducah. Now, we're on the verge, as I said, we've got a claimant that Ed Whitfield staff told that, told this family that hold on until the end, this young man has been denied his medical benefits, he's lost his liver, he's on rejection medication, and if, if we don't see an approval of this claim, I'm gonna light the candle down here every time you all have a meeting. Because I didn't know we lived in a community where DOE could get away with poisoning the community. And Mr. Murphy came to Paducah, he targeted me, I don't mind saying it, by Thursday you'll see my response to that. And I'm just saying, we all are, we are all our family here. And when you see the detail, listen to the whistleblowers. Don't just listen to me, listen to the families, listen to the people that are coming out. Listen to the people that told me where they buried the material in the middle of the night on farms. And if you don't know how this stuff will affect you, one atom of Tronium-90 inhaled is lethal. You don't have an opportunity, the doctors know it. Don't you realize that I know enough doctors around here that didn't agree that this Paducah city is clean? And they carried it home and my DOE friends were terminated or moved off the job site because they came out of the plant with this stuff on them. 30,000 contractors, not 7,000 Lockheed Martin, Mark Marietta Carvajal people, that's what the study was reflecting. They used the wrong quintel. And so, again, what, what I'm showing you here, so you all have got it, I would love for the clerk to receive and file this, today, Ed Whitfield and his staff deleted three of the claimant's appeals for help. And so my email back to Mr. Whitfield is, if you're here to help me, Ed, why are you not telling your staff that, that these people are not open season to dismissals? If you, if they tell you that Gary Vanderbow is here and he shouldn't be helping claimants, then every one of you all need to get the phone calls and the people crying. So again, look at the detail of this, I'll send it to you electronically, it only went out to certain people. I don't think I put any of you on distribution, it went out to Hillis Elise and the Department of Justice. So look at these and please have a heart. I mean, I, listen, I should be able to retire, I don't need to worry about these claimants, but I can't give it up, there's nobody helping these people. So we help people that have been denied or are absolutely out of, out of strength or exhausted from this claims process. I'm not the only one. I may be a leader in Paducah, but I'm not by myself. Donna Hand in Florida is struggling with this very same thing.
Gary, I've given you an ample five minutes-
You absolutely have and I appreciate it and that's all, Gail, I appreciate that.
We tried to abide by that and thank you for coming.
Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll be back and, and again, one last thing, we would like to see you all go ahead and, we haven't heard anything on the status of the workshop. Carol, you brought that up, a lot of the claimants are calling me, what happened to the workshop? Is it gonna happen?
As I understood, the city manager, that you met with the mayor and talked to the mayor and he, before going to Washington, and then the city manager had a conversation with you? No?
Wasn't anything to do with, about the workshop.
Did you not speak with both of them?
Well, I spoke, spoke with the mayor, but I didn't speak with the mayor about your workshop.
Well, I wouldn't be the one to conduct the workshop.
Do what?
I wouldn't be the one to conduct the workshop.
Who would, you all didn't think that was a workshop, did you?
No.
No, I just, I just came up-
They would work out the details of the workshop and bring people in.
Okay, so you're saying the mayor will work out the details on when-
Mayor and the city manager will work that out.
Now, I did have a conversation with Jeff, real, real cordial conversation, and I did say perhaps-
Bringing in something with Mr. Denton?
Well, yeah, and I said, perhaps when Dave gets back, we could kind of avoid a lot of the confusion.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I would still offer that, I just hadn't heard anything, nobody's called me. And I don't want to keep, I came in to really talk to the mayor and kind of mend fences because he got to meet one of the claimants that actually was, that had received Dr. Rousch's letter and we provided that to the mayor, have you all seen that letter? Dr. Rousch's letter for that claimant? Pretty disturbing because that is the criteria for the case, if that had been your relative, you should have been paid.
Well-
And, and so, please feel free. Again, we know your husband's an attorney, but as I said, we're here to, we're here to help, help attorneys explain why they won't help everybody else in the community. They have no recourse. Remember that, I'm not an attorney. They only have recourse through me and as long as those cases are blocked from going to the court, if I was an attorney, they'd be in trouble.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? We're adjourned. No, no executive session.